They measure.
That's right.
Are you ready? We'll call the meeting to order.
That's true.
We know. Okay. Did I get everybody? Uh, Mary still add, Mary is still adding.
Add. Should have hit everybody now.
There we go.
And do you guys see that someone's joined? Cause we were kind of trying to change our format.
Yeah.
So that we can have a stagnant zoom ID stagnant zoom meeting.
Yeah.
So we're using the counties instead of creating a new one every time. So if you guys see someone in the waiting room, please tell me, cause I may miss it. Anyway, so we've been called here tonight for a work session.
The heavy rock haul role for everybody.
Yeah. John Meehan, Mike Burke.
Here.
Sandra Gerlock.
Here.
Christine Fogg.
Here.
Thank you. Tom Stewart.
Yes.
Monica McHugh.
Here.
Mary Key.
Well, there.
Her name was up there.
Back to the zoom.
Um, I should, we should, I'm looking for a document. We should still be able to hear everybody.
Mary, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Hey, John.
John Manson.
Here.
We could work that into there. Okay. Okay. Does that make me there? Go ahead. I don't know which one I learned.
So anyway, we're doing a joint, just a workshop. The best way I had heard about, oh shoot, I was making notes. John, could you yell at Becca? And I had my notes from tonight sitting on my desk when we were talking. Easy.
She just go out there?
She did. Um, the best way I described, uh, used, I heard this described as, you know, the old game of telephone.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and it's like, we want this, we want that, or you know, it just, and it gets diluted. This is just the best way to make sure that everybody is on the same page and, and we can move forward with continuity. I apologize. I got sidetracked with my notes. I was adding some other stuff to it. I'll wait for Don to get back and, um, we got the agenda. You guys mind if I can explain what I have up here or should we wait for Don?
We'll wait ahead.
Make sure he has.
I think he heard enough.
Okay, so, um, last week, okay, so there's been talk that we wanted to put a buffer around that Plum River Fault Zone. And, um, so we reached out to one hydrologist and Brenner. And then he punted us to Ryan Clark and I don't count the other guy's name, the hydrologist in front of me. So we, Tom was on that, that zoom call and they invited the board of supervisors. And I'm going to go ahead and paraphrase this in a nutshell. Mike, Nan, you guys screen me out, Tom. If, um, I'm oversimplifying this thing. But from the geologist, he told us that the Plum River Fault Zone has been stable for 300 million years. And that he had no concerns about wind turbines within that fault zone. Cause we were trying to, I mean, you guys were talking a mile, four miles, five miles, what we needed to put.
She hopes that's it.
It's not.
No.
Um, um, around that fault zone. So that was what was, um, what was talked about. So that was the reason for reaching out. So instead of grabbing arbitrary number, we wanted information from the experts.
Right. And I know we've had this conversation because how many rock quarries do we have around there?
Oh gosh, I couldn't even tell you without looking, cause I haven't been tasked with that.
Okay. Uh, and Jackson County or? Well, I mean, even around the fault line. I don't even know where it comes. There's a fault zone. Right in front of my house. Does it really?
Yeah, literally. As north of Sebula, just north of Preston to just south of Mokka.
Yeah. Right. So we've obviously got rock quarries there too. They're doing blasting. So if we've got blasting already going on, why would we want something for wind turbines? Cause they, they don't, but they don't emit out the destruction of my geology days of what, you know, wind turbine one. So I, I don't think that should be something that should be in the ordinance. I, I don't want to add more things into this ordinance. We have a very restricted one already. Um, and just to be adding things in, to be adding things in.
Well, the reason I asked for this meeting is because there's a couple of things that I would like to see in it.
Yeah.
I showed up at a couple of meetings that were no participation from the public. So.
Right.
Floyd County got sued because the, or has the intent to sue because you got their zoning approved in ordinance five to zero. It came to the supervisors, they changed it. That caused the intent to sue. I want to forego that because what I would like to see in there is just like the jail we built and the schools are gonna build, it has a fire detection system and fire suppressions. That's why I sent that information out. Uh, the information was sent to you is what Germany uses, but I also have the one that all of Europe uses. All of their windmills have it. It makes sense. I saw mechanics film, fire suppression make sense.
I, and I don't disagree with that at all. I hope.
How common is it in the United States now?
What's that?
It's in fact, okay.
For some reason, the United States doesn't require fire suppression.
The cost, I'm sure it has something to do.
What we do in all of our buildings, isn't it?
With that?
What we do in all of our buildings.
Yeah, it's right. Yeah.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, right.
I guess, I just, you just, it's, it's there for a reason. Every, every building has its command. It makes sense. Fire department can't spray that high. They can't get that close and you don't put water on an electrical fire. So.
Really?
So that is why I sent that out. I would like to see that out there. Um, the fault line stuff, yeah, they didn't. What, what that guy also said is if there's sinkholes.
Yeah.
You need a lot more geological studying because that could be Swiss cheese underneath. And he wouldn't say anything about that other than that would be a lot more of a problem. If that's the case, that opens up a lot more Jackson County problems.
Yeah.
Than the fault.
I asked him, I asked him to span out in Jackson County, cause we were, and rightly so, we had asked him to talk about the Plum River Fault Line. But when you span out on Jackson County, um, there's a lot of those sinkholes all over.
Yeah, there are.
Yeah, lots of them. And so that, you know, that could be a problem. So, but yeah, my take, my take home from that meeting was, and we, I agree with you. We got a lot of restrictions already.
Yeah.
Um, but from the experts' point of view, it shouldn't affect the fault line itself. And we talked about the, you know, the, the sinkholes and they, you know, that might be a problem, you know, if you got, you know, a windmill on first, uh, right there, but it'd have to do with geological study for each individual, individual, like any of them. But.
Oh, that way.
Yeah, okay, so.
Uh, what he said, what I got out of the sinkhole thing was he said, we just don't know. There are various sizes of fish.
Yeah.
He said, but certainly there was activity there in, in some. So there's activity means there could be more activity. You wouldn't want to be within excellent season.
Yeah, and, and the ones they had identified were just strictly from an aerial view. They didn't come out on the ground and probe them or anything. They could, they were just looking at a map and they identified them from, you know, aerial photography. So I'm not sure how we might want to, you know, deal with that. But the fault line itself, they didn't make it sound like that was a problem.
The one thing he did recommend, um, he had pointed to the fact that DNR, when they're permitting their CAFOs and other animal uh, feeding operations, that there's restrictions in place around, um, the sinkholes for groundwater contamination. And so I've reached out to, um, one of the people that's in charge of permitting CAFOs and I have that information here. Um, most of what I was able to find was, um, maybe it's not on this. Okay, it's at the bottom of here. So, um. Thank you. Um, so basically around the, any identified sinkholes, they're recommending a thousand foot setback. And that's for the groundwater contamination. And if I remember them talking, that was also more, not less about settling of the sinkhole itself, but about the contaminants that could possibly leach from the turbine into the, into the, into the ground. Um, so that's why here, the, the CAFO sightings there, um, but there's a, there's a, well, wellhead or cistern of an agricultural drainage well or known sinkhole or a major water source excluding farm ponds, privately owned lakes, or when a secondary containment barrier is provided. So that's when they're recommending those thousand foot setbacks from a sinkhole. So this is CAFOs, but it could really easily.
But here's my question. We put in the ordinance about following all DNR recommendations. Would this fall under that?
I think you need to state it.
We, I, I wouldn't say we assume that's what it meant, but I think you need to put it in there. If that's what you want, you need to visualize, put it in there.
Well.
You can go back to case, case by case, but that's hearsay.
But I, what I.
This is talking about animals, so.
That, well, but see, so are the birds, are the animals. So this would be a question for the county attorney. When we are, um, looking at it on the ordinance, whether or not this would fall under that when we have put in, they need to follow DNR recommendations.
Um.
What would be the difference if you just put it in there?
I, I, I can do that. However, I want to make the distinction, the animal confinement people are not reached out to about their, this, this entity of DNR is not one of the regulatory's for what they'd be reaching out, because it would be more the wildlife um, side of DNR, not the CAFO side. So, I'm sorry, Tom, go ahead.
No, no, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was just gonna say, I, I gotta agree with over here is we better state it.
Okay. Because, I mean, if I was gonna fight that, I'd be like, well, that's talking about animals. It's not talking about turbines.
I, I would agree.
Regulation and say that it's the same as a turbine.
I would agree with a thousand feet, you know, from any sinkhole.
Commissioners, do you guys wanna make an agreement that you guys want, that we need to be looking at that language to add, additional setbacks from known sinkholes? And that would be their responsibility to know that geographic area.
Yeah, because, you know, my concern, like I said before, is we're concentrating down on the southern part of the county and the southeast part, because that's where the concern is right now, with what's being going on in Clinton County. But I'm thinking, uh, you know, the overview for the whole county, we better include that for the northern and the, uh, northwestern part had a lot in it as well.
Would you, when listening to that guy, um, he did talk about requiring, if there's known sinkholes in the area, requiring additional geological survey to make sure, he said sometimes that, that bedrock can be very porous and not give the necessary support. So.
They, I mean, they should be doing that already.
That's.
I mean.
And he also mentioned, he also mentioned additional engineering.
And so like Mike said, just, just because it's not showing up on this aerial map and they're identifying it, doesn't mean that there's not something there.
Right. No, and I, I agree with that.
So guys, uh, this is Chris. I don't know whether I need to raise my hand. I'm in a car and having difficulty with this. Um, I'm concerned about the sinkholes. I understand it's been, the fault line's been stable for 300 million years, but, and we've had the blasting and we've got the sinkholes and then adding the turbines is just another variable that we don't know what will happen without further geological, uh, surveys.
I actually asked him if they would guarantee that and he's been nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they, they, they don't want to be tied down like that. But, you know, after that conversation and, and on Zoom, you know, I wasn't nearly, and like I said, the thing runs right in front of us. I've been aware of the Plum River Fault for years. And I'm not so concerned about the fault line itself, but it did really raise my eyebrows about the sinkholes.
Totally. Something I would have never given thought to, um, cause the focus had been on that fault zone and, um, but.
They brought it up, so.
Yeah, right.
And, but they're primarily concerned, is that what your perception was too, that it was mostly based around, um, water, water from the.
Well, I, I got out of it that, obviously, yeah, I, obviously it moved for a reason. So it could move some more. So, or, you know.
Well, and I, I took it as since there was already activity there that was making it where the stuff could seep in to the water table. Not that it was gonna move more. It's just that there was already an opening that could seep stuff into the, into the water.
I think both, I got both of that.
Okay.
Out of, out of the conversation, that there might be, you know, there might be degradation of the sinkhole itself. But the real concern is, is that then if you have a catastrophic failure, then that's opening up the groundwater to any contaminants that come out of the windmill.
Well, I think we can agree to have some of that wording in there.
I'll work on finding that.
I think that's actually, that's actually a pretty good phrase there, you know, that second one down and drainage, drainage well, known sinkhole, uh, major water source, you know.
Well.
Farm ponds and the whole works, you know.
The other thing is we need to, um, with this, we, we need to have, um, the companies do a geological survey. I think that ought to be a requirement then.
I wanna think that's part of what they, that they do already.
But I think we should do it and then.
Just put the language in.
The language in and then include the thousand feet.
I agree.
So checking off, um, discussion points here, we all agree on the fire suppression?
Yes, I think that's kind of a no brainer that that should be.
And we all agree on the same whole.
And just so you know, I found language in one ordinance in the state of Iowa. And I had skimmed earlier, um, through Madison, Buchanan, Folk, Cedar, Boone, Bremer, Powashik, Scott, Palo Alto, Clinton, Delaware, Dickinson, Lynn. No language in any of those ordinances on fire suppression.
That's okay. We don't care.
I found it in work.
Fire detection, fire suppression, SCADA system, we use that for the water treatment plant, did test to make sure a well's working. That's a known thing that, that's, that's detection, because that automatically alarms, triggers things, allows things to go off and fire suppression.
And that's the way theirs was, where there was a 24 hour man. So basically your law center where it would send, um, the signal to, to, to dispatch fire.
Right.
Whatnot. So that was where I found that.
SCADA system can also cause the, the suppression system to go off. So.
Okay.
It goes hand in hand.
So anyway, I was so glad after skimming all those ordinances, I had to Google to find an Iowa fire suppression ordinance for wind turbines. I found it. I don't know. That's up to Monica. Are you taking any comments?
No comments tonight. This, no, this is a work session just between the board, the boards. We didn't put it in our agenda.
I asked and it wasn't responded back to me. So that's why I'm asking, say something just about fire suppression. Yeah, that's one thing that's like.
I, I, I just, out of personal note, I had a fireman from Preston talk to me about that and his real concerns about, you know, a fire on a windmill and the fact that, you know, how they're, how they're gonna be able to handle that.
They don't have anything that can reach it.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
I guess.
And they can't get within the falls.
Yeah, and I said, fuck with that word. Yeah.
Yeah, if maintenance can't get within 3,000 feet, nobody else should be within 3,000 feet.
Ken, I, I just wanna throw something back up there with you guys, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Okay. I think I shared with you guys what the Great River Road, the scenic byway buffers did to our county. And the only place where we had, um, we had some, I, areas in the northwest part of the county that did not get caught in, in that visual natural resource um, that we have. And then an area around Preston, Spragueville, and a little bit of Miles that did not get caught by that buffer. But you want to know what that catches? From everything I looked, looked at, I've tried to find the easement agreements. None of the, I think, four easement agreements that are still in that area can meet the setbacks. We don't have a, that I found, unless I've missed one, but I cannot find a single easement agreement that meets the 1,500 foot setback. Everything I saw was 40 acres, 1,320 feet is the distance of a quarter, quarter. And if you have stick it in the center, you still can't make 1,500 feet on each side of that property line. And what I found.
Know that that's our concern.
Well.
To do that, I think we put it in there for a reason, to protect what we want to protect.
We did.
Don't know that we need to find out and, and incriminate somebody or in particular area. I don't know that you're pinpointing your farm or anybody else's. I think you're generalizing a ordinance.
I, I am, and I know there's a lot of concern about adding this and adding this. And from what I found, this, there's a, a few of those easement agreements that are, um, 600 or 160 acres that are outside of that buffer that you still can't make it, because even if you go in the center of those four quarter quarters, we're putting, we've got, we have.
It doesn't matter.
We have protections.
I get it.
Okay, okay.
Techno, to me, we're not writing this just to make the 600 foot windmill not work. We're doing this to cover windmills because technologies change, you know, windmills change, you know. A 600 foot windmill blade speed so fast to get so much energy, 400 foot windmill has to spin a lot faster, you know. Technologies can change, designs can change, all that stuff. Then it's, we're not just trying to rule out these kind of windows. We're just trying not to have to do this over and over again every time. Technology changes.
I see that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
So we agreed on that two powerpoints, if it will call a powerpoint, like I had mentioned in the open session that now we're above blade speed. I know, um, from research, they can travel anywhere from 80 to 180, 190 millimeter. I realize that, you know, they might not consider shorter windmills, but they have before. Like Don said, I think engineers will come up with something to make it work if they have to be shorter. I'm a little concerned about blade speed, you know, if, if there is such a thing. They, they talked about ice throw distance. They talked about, um, different things about the ability to, if they should come apart, like the ones in mechanics building, who's been down that way, um, how far they did throw material. So I, you know, I, I don't know. Is there, do we want something in there about blade speed?
Did you find out any information more on that?
No. I, um, and I know the board of supervisors can attest, I've had a lot in my plate since the last, um, last meeting. I, I have given this some attention, but I haven't started updating the, the last draft yet either. Um, but no, I did not get anywhere on that.
I'm still not comfortable not having anything in there about the fault line.
Fault zone. Yeah, and I.
Because, because he says that one geology, geologist says, well, I don't think it's gonna move. I don't know that that's a, I mean, it moved at one time.
So it's too big to comprehend how big it is.
You know. So do we know that it isn't gonna?
I agree with Nan on that. I think the windmill is just another variable to add to what we have and they have no i- idea what the unintended consequences would be on that fault.
If you did a three or five mile setback off the fault line, you basically with everything else, you wouldn't really have to deal with city, you know, cause we have cities passing ordinances, miles one to three mile setback, program's back and two mile setback, you know.
Preston, Asher, five.
But, you know.
My heart's beat last for 10.
You know, or do we put, input something in this ordinance stating X number from all cities, I.
I don't have any, I don't have any problem with putting something in there with fault line. What the problem I have is the fact that, you know, we got, you know, we were given information from, so to speak, experts that said it's not a problem. And so would that be a reason for them to sue us, you know, because we're not following, you know, you know, recommendations, you know.
I just wonder, should there be something in there for, uh, cities, you know, incorporated areas?
Right. I was, I was thinking the same thing. I'm, you know, we were gonna get to that. I was thinking, yeah, I don't necessarily have any problem, you know, with giving a, you know, in Preston or Miles one, you know, X amount of, uh, um, you know, distance, you know, maybe we'd uniform it, you know, so they're all the same. And that would take care of a lot of this area that's, you know, doesn't get covered by the same byway. That was in my mind, that was the kind of the solution to that.
And, and the reason, what would your reasoning be just to keep a level for future development?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So is two mile a enough or three?
Can I throw out some other, um, standards?
Sure.
Just so you guys know.
So, so let me. Do we have any, are there any other ordinances that have any protections around the fault line?
No. Not in our county.
In the state.
Um, I didn't have to look up that one, but I can.
I, I'm just with, with an expert telling us that it hasn't moved in 300 million years. Um, I think it's just a. But it also hasn't had 90 windmills sitting on it, running for. But they're, we're, they're not gonna be able to put 90 windmills around it is the, is the point, because of what we've already got in the ordinance. We, I mean.
They don't have room for it.
We don't have room for it. I mean, that's just the way the ordinance is already written now. If we do something like that, I mean, it gets overkill. And I don't want to hand you guys a 60 page ordinance with every tiny little piece of things in there. I want something that will be good for a number of years, so that we do not have to come back and address everything. Cause if we, if we put this in there and this in there and this in there, the thing's gonna be 60 pages. We shouldn't have a 60 page ordinance, because what will happen is we'll have something in this section that doesn't agree with this section. doesn't agree with this section. I'd rather see something neat, tidy, and small to send to you guys.
Well, the only three things that I had to talk about was the fire detection suppression systems, fault lines, sinkholes, we kind of addressed that. If, yeah, I heard the guy say fault lines, he, he doesn't think it's gonna move. Then he brought up sinkholes and.
The sinkholes is, I think.
Then, you know, so we've addressed that, thousand feet and all that. Okay, cool. And city zones, yeah, miles is past three miles. If Preston is thinking about five, maybe we put it out, we're just gonna do a standard three-mile zone around all incorporated areas in Jackson County. Um, unincorporated, uh I don't know how you would do that, you know, but.
What cities do we have that are unincorporated?
Laser Lake, Green Island.
Yeah, Hersville.
And Green Island's covered by the Great River Road.
Yeah.
Buffer.
So it's be Hersville.
But at the same time, or how much expansion are we looking for at Green Island or Canton or in the line?
Laser Lake, as many people as Preston.
I can believe that.
So that would be my recommendation, like a, a uniformed three-mile around incorporated areas.
What does it, it says two mile now, if you build a subdivision, they have to comply by city ordinances, correct?
Correct. There's, so the way the, um, and it's only three of the towns in the county that has this, but not that you couldn't apply this part to any, everything else. Um, Macocata, Bellevue, and Preston all have their own comprehensive plans. And they work with the county. So if there's any type, not just a subdivision, but even a, a plot of survey. So if there's a plot of survey that's just splitting off five acres out of a forty, they still get to sign off on that. On anything with, that's within two miles of their town, and that is for development.
Mm-hmm.
So they, I mean, they've kind of already agreed on two-mile development buffer around Macocata, in which all of Macocata is caught by um, um, the Grand River Scenic Byway.
Right. Well, we gotta check the moment, so I would say if it's three miles, three miles, not that hard. We just say two or three mile under one year.
Yeah. The one three miles.
I.
So let's just finish up the radius before we go to another one.
I think with the, with the cities on that, because we already have the two miles with the comprehensive plans, I think we should stick with the two miles.
Great.
I was gonna say, because we've been requested um higher than that, I was gonna say three.
I was, I was going with three just because miles, miles is already past the ordinance. It's in their books already.
It's a resolution.
Or resolution, whatever. So that's where my three mile came from. It's just because that's already been adapted by one town, you know, you, you know, you don't wanna tell them, oh, I want twenty mile setback or, you know, and just, we can kind of say this is the standard, so it's great.
I think, and my reasoning on doing the two miles is because that is already a standard that we've got set with the comprehensive plans. Because again, if we've got.
And our plating, plating ordinance too.
Yeah, and our plating ordinance too. And so I'd rather have a standard set for all of these rather than having to go, no, wait a minute, I need to look because which ordinance tells me I can do this and which ordinance tells me I can do that. I'd rather have it more simple than have um different things in each ordinance that we send to you guys. Cause we, I mean, we've got a lot of cleanup already that needs to be done that we have not even looked at.
I would also agree with the, with the three miles. Instead of two, I know the comprehensive plan says two, but it doesn't have to be exact, in my opinion. We can maybe deferral change a little bit and go with the three miles. That would be at least what I would be more comfortable with.
I mean, you can put it in there.
I, I'd be comfortable with the three miles as well, just to comply with the resolutions and the desires of the towns.
Well, one has ten miles.
Yeah, one has ten miles, so.
Well, we're just trying to standardize it.
I, and I would refer to standardize it and to go with what we've got with the comprehensive plans. I mean, if, if, if the majority wants to go three miles, that's fine. I, that's something I don't agree with because I think we need to standardize it since we do it with two miles for comprehensive plans. That's, that's my point.
And, and part of that is giving the um, the two miles is, I believe, that those three cities, Macocata, Preston, Bellevue, agreed on those because realistically, are they gonna develop three miles out? Are they gonna develop five miles out? Um, two miles, I think, is a realistic development. If you look at how our towns are grown or how our towns and the county are set up.
But that also gives them an extra mile then once, so they may go out the two miles, but that gives them a mile before they hit a windmill.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what I was just saying.
Miles, it goes two miles again, so. So if they, if they, if they wanna go two miles out, that extends that.
But if that windmill's already there, it's not gonna, they're not gonna tear it down and move it a mile.
No, that's true, but I mean, realistically, there's not gonna be one built here. I, when you look at.
Is this a zoning meeting where you take action?
They can, you can't.
That's right. That's what I said. Is this a zoning meeting where you can take?
Is a zoning.
So I hear discussion back and forth, a lot of different discussion. I, my suggestion would be somebody make a motion if they would like and move on.
And that's, and that's what I'm just.
Just a moment.
Getting to, I wanted to let him take his course a little bit more.
Discussion, topics of discussion include but not limited to, and there is nothing written in here about action.
I, it'll work session, I just think you could actually.
Yeah, we have no action.
We have no action.
So we can't take action, okay.
Yeah.
You guys are gonna come up with a.
Well.
What, what I will, sorry. What I will say on that then is I did get approached by one of the city managers, and that was exactly the, the thinking that they were having is, is if they've got a two-mile, you know, buffer now, they want that extra mile. So as if they build out, they've got another mile before they get to a windmill.
Yeah.
So it's more of a, an aesthetic thing, you know, for, you know, that buffer zone, that elbow room. So I.
I mean, we.
If I can make a motion, I can at least say that I am all for three miles as well.
And we can do that next meeting, I.
Okay.
So we never did finish up the blade speed. I like to finish it up. If anybody has any concerns, I'll.
Well, I'm interested in what you have in mind for limiting it.
Well, when I went out and searched for a couple of different places, first, you know, it's about Googling whoever, whatever, but the, like, what they figure is they can travel anywhere from around eighty to a hundred and eighty to a hundred and ninety. At the point. Outside diameter, right? So I, I mean, what all I'm saying is I don't wanna build a two hundred feet tall and spin it, you know, in the old days, the faster you spend your windmill, the more water you got, right? So I, I don't know if that's the case or not, but, you know. I don't wanna travel four miles an hour. That could be over stating my point, but like. And I don't care. That was just a thought when I heard how far, in the last meeting, we, we heard how far the ice flew, we heard how far and, you know. I, I, I think Highway twenty's in trouble out there. But Manchester with some of them that are that close to the highway with ice, I think they're a double.
Yeah, that really are very well, I think.
I, I don't disagree with that. And my concern with limiting how fast they can go is we're not engineers to know how they work. And since we don't know how, I, you know, do you know how fast they spin all the time?
The things I've seen is two hundred to four hundred.
Yeah, that, that's, I, I had heard in the past, the big windmills, and this has been a few years ago, the tip speed was two hundred miles an hour. And I don't know if that's changed because.
With the takeout, I don't know.
Yeah, right. And that was, that was a few years ago. And um, so I'm not sure where it's at right now.
And depending on where that breaks off is gonna depend on where that flies. I mean, that breaks off when it's down here, obviously, it's not gonna fly as far as when it's coming around.
Rather than doing wind speed, is there something that we can look at with the potential for ice storms that we require them to be shut down? So that we can't, because that would take care of, of the speed.
Well, that's just for ice, but we have other potential disasters if they break apart or whatever may happen. You know, if they're at two hundred and fifty miles an hour and break apart, it's gonna obvious what happened down in Mechanicsville, they went forty acres, so they that's contaminated.
I, and I don't disagree with that, but my concern is how do we, how do we enforce it?
Well, and that's another question I have on the shadow flicker. If you have a shadow flicker for X amount of hours, who's gonna time that? Who's gonna measure that? Who's gonna, who's gonna say? I, you know, I don't want my grandparents sitting out on the porch and watching it for thirty seconds. I, I don't. I don't want them watching this shadow, you know. Who, who's gonna time that and say, well, it only runs thirty minutes this month? I mean, who's gonna do that? Who's gonna?
The way the ordinance is currently looking at is um computer-generated um as a computer analysis.
I mean, not just my grandparents, me too. I don't wanna sit out there watching.
To me, I think your shadow flicker shouldn't be on your property.
I agree.
So if it's a computer analysis, who performs that analysis? The uh turbine company or an independent entity?
Let's see how we have it in there.
I mean, we have to. I think it says a third party, but they're paying for it, so that's a third party on their side.
What do you have in there for a timeframe now for shadow, so?
Thirty hours.
Thirty hours.
A year.
Annually, yeah.
I think they'll get around the winds, I think they'll get around the wind speed more than, just because I don't think they're designed to go, the wind is over so many miles per hour, they shut down because.
Right. Are they worried about damage to the, they can't handle the.
Whatever.
The physics, so they'll just say that.
I'm not okay with that.
Yeah, you know, I think they, they just shut them down because they don't wanna work it in and it'll have to be come apart.
Okay, answering your question. An owner of the C-Wax shall use shadow flicker computer modeling to estimate the amount of shadow flicker anticipated by the commercial wax and shall design the wind conversion system so that the commuter, computer modeling indicates um indicates, hang on, I lost my eye, or my spot.
So you still.
So basically, it's, it's a wind, wind people hiring somebody to.
Or their own company. So here, down to the next paragraph, just so you guys know. So indeed, an owner shall operate the C-Wax in a manner that does not cause more than thirty hours a year of shadow flicker on the walls or windows of a non-participating residence or structure. You can change that.
I think it should be zero.
Should be. So, you know, if it's so.
So, so can we require, can we require or designate a third party that they, the wind turbine people have to pay for? So we choose the third party and they can't object to it as long as it was um, uh competitive with a market price for doing the survey?
I don't think the county should be involved in hiring a, a shadow flicker company.
Uh, we have no equipment and or manpower to do any of that. And if you hire a third party, you, I mean, honestly, what's it gonna, what's it gonna do? You gonna put equipment in there to tell when it's on the, on the window of the house or is you gonna sit there and time it? Well, obviously, he's not gonna sit there.
There's my two problems with.
No, I mean, if it's a computer modeling system, I mean, we wouldn't pay for it as the county. We would maybe give them three independent companies or whatever to do it, and they would have to pay for it. So we knew it was independent and they weren't fudging the numbers.
So are we gonna re, so are we gonna require companies to register with the county that, that perform this? And who's gonna monitor it? That's my concern.
We already have it on the sound. So what's the difference in not in hiring an outside, you know, having an outside company doing the research here? We already have it on the sound.
Yeah, we have it on the sound.
So what's wrong with using it here?
No, I, I think we should. I don't think the county should be responsible for it.
No, I, I like that idea. They're, they're gonna, they're gonna put the system in.
If we change it to zero, that's not an issue.
That's right. They don't have to monitor. I'm okay with zero. No more than.
If there's.
I'm okay with zero too.
Zero on your property.
Well, I'd say an inhabited.
An inhabited structure.
Well.
Which we were trying to get away from, an inhabited structure.
We're gonna have to change some definitions if we're going into.
Structure, just leave it a structure.
Okay.
Any structure.
Because the other thing I didn't like in this ordinance is they can come in and put up curtains. Well, come to my house, I don't have curtains on it.
Right.
Yeah, right, exactly. We don't.
Now you're gonna make me have curtains because I've lived there for fifty years and never had curtains on my house because I like to look out and see my view. But now because if it can be computer, um, like somebody mentioned, if there's some computer system that can make it zero shadow flicker.
Well, there is, but there's also curtailment too. Curtailment can be used.
I'm okay with zero as well.
And there's no motions or anything like that, so it's just, just notes and I will.
Put it on the list that we need to make a motion the next time.
Yeah.
And I know this was mentioned, and I think this is the last one I have wrote down, is I know it was mentioned, I don't know if they, anybody ever agreed to it, and I think we talked about it after the last meeting, or you guys did, was the cemetery thing.
Yeah, right.
I know they're quiet, but I, you know, there's a, there's a dignity issue there also and, and respect, if you will.
Or if you are there, having a service.
Is that also there? I'm okay with the yes because like you then said, if you're having a funeral and you're all standing around and you gotta hear.
And you're. Well, keep in mind, it's gonna be at least fifteen hundred feet from a property line.
Well, that's not that far though.
Well, fifteen hundred from a property line, but at the same time, do we have any that can meet those setbacks?
You may not now, but you may later on. I mean, Mike sells his property to somebody and now all of a sudden Tom Stewart has, or Linda Flickle sells her property and Tom, Tom Stewart now has the whole block out there.
Yeah.
So we also have what, forty Pioneer Cemetery?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, were you talking about?
That's why I asked.
Pioneer cemeteries as well because there's a ton of them out there.
There's burial rates in the Pioneer Cemetery. There's only so many every so often, but there's burial rates.
Um, I'm just throwing it out there, but it won't cover all of them. But our buffers, if you guys add a buffer around the towns of two to three miles, that's gonna cover a large portion. That's not already covered by the Grand River Scenic Byway buffer and the one that's not covered by the Great River Road buffer.
Hickory Grove out by Kenan has nothing around it.
Probably none, but.
And that's a, I mean, there are a lot of people in that cemetery.
You're gonna get a lot of noise when she's buried out there.
Here's, I just.
Get a lot of noise when you're buried out there.
I, I've.
I mean, they're out there, they would not be covered by any towns.
And, and I've heard this from, from other people. We're putting protections around cemeteries, but we're not putting protections around homes. So how do you wanna justify not putting a protection around, you know, if you wanna put a buffer around a cemetery where there's nobody alive, why aren't you putting a mile buffer around people's homes? This is a cemetery where people are gonna go periodically, well, some forever, but periodically. And, you know, it's not gonna ruin, I mean, they're already in a bad mood, I mean, you know. But we're putting a buffer around a cemetery, but what about, I mean, if we're gonna do a mile buffer around them, it's like you should be doing around houses and not worry about the cemeteries. Sorry.
Most.
It's double the output here.
So technically, each, each cemetery would be a property line, so you've got your fifteen hundred.
Got your fifteen hundred.
I think most of your cemeteries are established already. That means the Pioneer cemeteries are not gonna grow when they're full, they're full. And I don't know about the other cemeteries, they have the option to grow, but I think most of them are established and.
Well, I know of a private cemetery coming in mom's township.
They can put a private cemetery in, just put one in.
It's in our zoning regulations, yes, they're allowable, you. But anyway, so we're adding, we're adding a cemetery somewhere.
That's it there too.
But just, I wanted to throw that out there because, you know, we got a cemetery, we already got fifteen hundred foot setback. But just, I wanted to throw that out there because, you know, we got a cemetery, we already got fifteen hundred foot setbacks.
So are all of our cemetery is gonna fall into?
Into category of property line, it should.
Everybody, everything would, even. A right away.
If you take the layers, you're fifteen hundred feet, if you take the sinkholes thousand feet away. If you take the the Grand Wood Scenic Byways and all that kinda stuff, if you start doing that. You're gonna have about a three inch square of Jackson County that maybe could.
But this, this is my point with what we already have in there now. This is my point with what we already have in the ordinance today.
Just going with what Monica said about wanting to keep things. Equal, the two miles, three miles, I know, whatever, you know, right there, you already have a difference. You did fifteen hundred feet, but now you're doing only a thousand feet from. A sinkhole and then someplace in here you have thirteen twenty. For wetlands, no, they shall be.
They should all be.
Shall be fifteen hundred.
They shall be fifteen hundred except for, well, if they go with a thousand on.
Wetland scenic or natural area.
Where, that's in our, which which draft? Was it dated on the draft?
Thought I compared to this to what was on the website there.
I'll I'll Google, I mean, excuse me, I'll query out thirteen hundred and twenty. And then we're saying about a thousand and keeping it consistent um. And I think the reason they were talking about doing the thousand around the sinkhole. Is because that's a standard that the D N R has already set. And instead of adding something arbitrary, you know, like fifteen hundred when D N R is saying.
I get that, I was just pointing out the point that there's different things in the ordinance.
No, because everything else should be fifteen hundred because we we went through all that, so you might not have the most recent copy on that.
Um, speaking of that, there's just something I really need to bring up again, and I really want you guys to think about it. This is one of those things that, you know, keeps my brain going at night when I can't sleep, you guys. I know we want that consistency with fifteen hundred foot setbacks. But I really would like you guys to think hard about these. Personal ones on, you know, a hundred foot personal tower on someone's property that only owns. Three acres, four acres, they can meet setbacks, but they can't meet a fifteen hundred foot setback. On that hundred foot personal use tower. So I, you know, I I love consistency, but I need. Um, the the private ones are the.
I know, but that's still pretty tall.
Well, the other ones are four hundred and they're a, they're they're constructed differently. And we're treating a tower that's set up the same as a cell phone tower differently than we are. Are that wind turbine. And. I just wanted you guys to think about that. Is that really where you wanna go? Because, you know, the guy even, oh, I'd have to do the man. The the guy would just.
There's one out by us that's that's a private one.
Yeah, so if you got a hundred feet, um if you're, what was, is that the max hundred feet? I mean, you should take your fall distance and by times whatever. You know, for the smaller, smaller ones, the state district tower on the Belvin Cascade. Would be five hundred foot across the road to check out. And and we did not look at that close enough, I mean, it's on state ground, that's why they put it there, but that's.
Well, and that's kind of a take of land too, because they, there's some issues with the program next door.
I get it.
So even, and I think I did my math right, Tom Farmer, you guys can. You guys can.
Feet is three point seven five. The tower height.
Right, so.
Because that was the other thing I was asking in there.
But.
Was the three point seven five or four times.
So a hundred foot, a hundred foot personal use tower, three point five would be three hundred and fifty feet. From the property line setback. So we got that. And so if a guy has ten acres, is that six sixty by six sixty would get you ten acres? You wouldn't be able to, no one with a ten acre parcel would be able to put up a personal turbine. That's just what I wanted to throw out there, um, numbers is kind of my, my. My my quirk. And I hope I did my math right, I did it on paper, I shouldn't have done that. I should know not to do meeting math. I did it right, it's ten acres, guys. Um, so six sixty by six sixty, if you had a hundred foot personal tower sitting in the middle of that. We wouldn't better grant one to anybody that's got ten acres. Actually. We wouldn't better grant it to anybody that had forty acres. Because you can't meet the the fifteen hundred feet setback on even a person that would have forty acres. So we've just kind of limited anybody other than a farmer. To have, you know, anyone that's an actual big egg exempt farmer. To being able to have a a personal use turbine.
Could that be taken to the board of adjustment for an exception?
Um, yes and no, um, you wouldn't be able to grant them more than um fifty percent of the ask. And so if they have ten acres and they're needing a fifteen hundred foot setback.
Seven hundred and fifty feet is half.
We, you still can't get it.
So honestly, if if your process, your thought process was one point three seven or whatever you said. Of the of the height of the individual turbine, can't you do that with personal ones also? They use the same number? Instead of fifteen hundred feet?
Well, if you're.
Uniform again?
Well.
So if you got a hundred foot tower, it's what? How many feet did you say?
Um, three, three, if it was three point, what, six, five? Three point five.
Whatever you said it was.
And then you said it, I used her numbers. So if it's three um.
Right now, the setback.
Three point seven five. Okay, so. Three hundred and seventy five feet. I have. You could make, I think you can make that setback on ten acres, but you wouldn't be able to make it on anything less.
Sure, the football field is three hundred.
That's yards, yeah, old V again. So if you have six hundred and sixty. If you had a ten acres that was six hundred and sixty feet wide. And you times that times two for the tower height, you know, because you gotta get on both sides of that property line and the center of the property. You're coming up at seven hundred and fifty feet. So ten acres, you could not get a hundred foot turbine, a private use turbine if you were using a three point seven five setback. Just like I said, it's all in the numbers and we're gonna take um rights away from. People that own ten acres, fifteen, maybe even twenty acres.
You're you're talking to ten, ten by ten square. I mean, ten acres in a square.
Yeah.
So what's the distance on a side then?
Six sixty.
Six hundred and fifty.
Six fifty. Or six six zero, excuse me, six six zero.
With twelve hundred and thirteen hundred and twenty feet across.
Six hundred and sixty feet across.
It's a square.
I guess, yeah, you have to.
If you guys, you know, if.
I'm gonna have to think about it a little bit because I'm torn between.
Consistency?
Yeah, consistency. With if a big one's dangerous, then you know, how dangerous is a small one? It's dangerous as well. But also you're talking about a smaller tower for the landowners, you know, purposes, so I I really am torn on that one. So I'm gonna have to think about it more.
Because the farmer, the the Tom Sturts of the world, you'd be able to. Yeah, I'm looking right at it, Tom.
But if if they had their ten acres, what would it take to be called a farmer?
Um, to be exempt, they'd have to, oh, gosh, I I can quote it, but I'm not, I can paraphrase it, I can't quote it. It's actively um using the the property to produce crops and limes. Livestock, but the first part of our of our criteria is forty acres to be exempt. And then the next, one of the next steps would be, you know, is it a high intensity operation that's producing the majority of the household income? And I'm, like I said, I'm paraphrasing it, but I'm I'm hitting it pretty close.
The one private one that I know, he fits because he's got forty acres.
Or more than, yeah, is it more than probably?
Yeah, that, yeah.
This is just pertaining to windmills. Wind, windmill.
The personal use, yes. Not commercial.
Not, no, I'm like, not full fashion water.
No, I wish.
Weather. Kind thing, do they have any of them that's?
Like the Met Towers?
Yes.
I mean, like Met Towers actually for a weather service or for a wind turbine company?
Just weather.
With, I don't know where we are in the country with any of those, if they can, if there's any there, but for my time.
No, he's not.
But he's exempt because he's.
He's exempt because he's a bag.
I know they, I know you guys are also set on that fifteen hundred foot. Um, fifteen hundred foot setback on the Met Towers. I know I got some stuff in the, we got an email today, and I know we're gonna have a sighting of another cell cell tower. And our requirements are not near as strict as, it's, I think, a one, one to one setback on a cell tower. And the wind turbine, or excuse me, the Met Tower is really less of a structure than.
I was gonna say, the Met Tower, I, I mean. I think the biggest thing with them is usually, you know, if they're putting up a Met Tower, they're looking at putting up windmills. As far as seeing it in the distance, it's basically the little red flashing light is what you're gonna see in the distance, it's very hard to see. It's easier to see, like you said, your radio towers, your cell phone towers, things like that off in the distance or your. Water towers or things like that, than what you are gonna see, your Met Towers, because usually they're just the tripod.
It looks like just normal radio tower or a weather station's meteorological tower. Um, so I just. I can see inconsistencies within this converting to others. I mean, we know that Met Towers, if there's a one that's put up by um. Wind turbine company, we know that's because they're studying it, but are we being more punitive? For that reason than we are a cell tower? So I just wanted to throw that out, just because I was working with a cell tower today and it came up um in my head. Because I, that fifteen hundred feet was in my head and I'm like. Well, we wouldn't have put any new cell towers up here either if we used the same criteria for that.
I think we did that clear back when David Manning was the zoning administrator.
Oh, you weren't. I remember doing it because we struggled with the distance there. Well, I think it was. When did you put, Mike, when did you put up the cell tower and the animal societal site?
Oh, it's been over twenty.
Yeah, it'd be about, it'd be about then that ballpark we were dealing with then.
And we were going both to be that far from property lines.
Right, yeah, yeah, but we we were dealing with because I remember your your example was brought up.
Yeah, because I think that's a one for one, one, one point one.
One point one is what I remember.
Yeah, so I just wanted to throw those out there. You know, talking about inconsistencies or maintaining consistent.
Question from when we had our meeting down at onward, did we add in that three point seven five or whatever is greater?
We had not, um, the commission has not.
Fifteen hundred.
Um, that's one of those things where um. Where you guys are gonna wanna think about it, just in case the.
Because if they come in and ask for some. A variance. Then that could, if they come in and ask for a variance, which is gonna get them at almost a six hundred foot. Your fifteen hundred isn't gonna be where you were at now at the three point seven five, the height of the tower.
That's, that's right, I would think that maybe, I mean, if you wanna consider that. Um, or I don't know if there's any way to put into where there are no special exceptions to the to the height or um. Neighbor waivers, I don't know, there might be some other things you guys might wanna add into there to that too.
Can we put it in there that there's no exceptions to the height?
Good question for our county attorney.
I was gonna say, is that even legal? I mean, or would we just get sued on that?
And you got that in the notes, Ryan, she writes faster than I do. So, um. I have on here John Key's question, okay? All right. And do you also want me to ask about waivers?
Yes, same weekend.
Neighbor, neighbor, neighbor waivers? So the neighbor waivers would be ones that would say, hey, they can be a little closer to the property line and I'm good with that.
Right.
So that's what I'm asking, can we um omit waivers?
I think the other thing that we wanted to talk about was blade storage to make sure that. No. No blades that uh are outdated or um damaged. Can be stored anywhere in Jackson County. I think we wanted to add that to.
Was that something from last month?
That was from the, that was from me, that was.
Don't we have that in there? Was, did we have thirty days in that?
Here's another line that I wasn't real comfortable with was.
But I think at onward, they were.
Shall be removed from the site within a time period as established by the Jackson County Wind Conversion Ordinance. Or disposal in accordance with the. Applicants local state. But we don't have a, a. Um, I didn't really see a time, I don't like leaving it. Open ended that because they're sitting out there two, almost two years into this and they've still got a mess.
Yeah, um, I, like I said, I I've been, I've had a little bit on my plate the last couple of weeks. And I wanna think there's something in our notes. There was a time limit in there already.
But I think this was to have like a recycling center for everybody to bring theirs too.
Oh, we don't have one, there's two in the state of Iowa.
We don't want one here, is what they wanted us to put in the ordinance.
Oh, really? But not as a, there was nothing mentioned about not having a recycling.
Or no recycling of cut off blades in Jackson County is what I needed that night.
Okay, because I don't know that that. That was.
Yeah, it was.
It was the storage.
Yeah, but. Facility.
So now we're gonna put a, this in here that we can't have an industry come in to recycle turbine.
I think the recycling needs to go, needs to be in something else, and I mean, I think we've got, because that would be.
Is not to have a junkyard.
Absolutely. And did you write in time, did we have like a thirty day time limit in that?
There is. There is a time limit later on, but in this one section.
Oh, we did, and on the catastrophic.
Disposal under that section.
Okay, we were gonna add it.
Catastrophic, yes, um, they have to have a plan within thirty days. And it shall not extend out beyond a hundred and twenty days from the day of the event.
Yeah.
Right.
But that doesn't address this.
Catastrophic, there's nothing under that, just the waste, so if they're changing out blades, there's nothing in there for it just says a reasonable.
I'll, I'll double check, because I wanna think we put something there, but I, I haven't touched it.
In decommissioning, are you gonna require them to grow the base down to three feet or are we gonna leave it at four?
Uh, we were gonna talk about that, weren't we? And that's, I was looking back at the email here to see what we had discovered yet.
Yeah, I'm looking.
I, I, I had asked to reconsider that, because after some thought and some discussion, I didn't think uh, four was deep enough.
I mean, you think about second offense posts.
Well, somebody brought up to me, what about, you know, if you're gonna be, if you're gonna, we're trying to bring this back to farmland, Tyler's go deeper than forty.
Right.
Needs to be a lot, lot deeper than four feet.
Right.
I mean, to me, if you're gonna say that you're bringing it back to what it was, I should be able to build a house on that side afterwards.
So are we talking, they have to just remove totally?
I don't say ten feet, but that's just mine.
I'm just asking.
If you build a house on it, you're gonna go deeper than that.
Right, and, and to the, the bases are sixteen, about sixty-five feet wide in diameter. Sixty-five feet in diameter. And but the center is constructed different to where they can take out a portion of it.
Right.
But the base is um is, is kind of forever thing. But um, do you want me to do more research on what some other counties?
Yeah.
Cause I, I was looking at some other.
I definitely, I'm not comfortable with four foot anymore, and that's what we had in there, so.
I'll ask my father-in-law how deep the one is on his place.
Yeah, and well, that'll also, I can find that in Boone County's.
Yeah.
And then plus, plus we need, we need to find out what they're doing now, because you know, what they're doing now might be different than what they did.
Yeah, half of these counties, they wrote their work.
Oh.
Yeah, no, this is a, yeah, that horrendous, ugly looking field out there.
The standard language I'm seeing is between four and six. So I can, I can, I can look for additional.
Okay.
And see what, you know, see what we have, but.
And I wanted to check that out.
Yeah, but the standard I'm seeing is four to six.
I feel like we need to go deeper than that.
Yep.
Can we include in the decommissioning plan and not cut up the blades on site just because of the fiberglass contamination we saw mechanics fill? If they start cutting the blades there, would that then lead to contamination?
Want that, want me to investigate that language too?
That too.
Do they know, where you cut them up, will they all? They just, I'm just, again, the fiberglass is everywhere. I don't know.
That's the scenario, because that, they're lying. I mean, that would mean the ore, I think, isolated.
What's?
Do they, do they recycle them? I think there's a plant, a recycling plant.
I know there's two in the state of Iowa.
You'll make tag facility in Newton is one recycling plant.
And the one in Marango, what? I don't know, I, I used to do.
Is it Marango or is it the one at Newton? I didn't think Marango was one. I thought the other one might be up at Fort Dodge.
Well, right, right.
So, I mean, I, I'm not sure.
Mike, do you wanna call back to work?
Yeah.
So, um, but yeah, to answer your question, Mike, there's at least two recycling plants in the state of Iowa. And I, I know I mentioned one other time, um, we have the Gaga Ball Pit in um the park, is that fifth ward, first ward over by that piece? Um, anyway, Gaga Ball Pit is made out of um wind turbines and then the park bench next to the Gaga Ball Pit is also part of a recycled turbine. But that's a lot of Gaga Ball Pits, you guys.
Yeah, yeah. Is there anything else we need to add in?
Um, let's just make sure we got all of our talking points in. Okay, you got the shadow flicker. We talked about that. We have sound in here, but we've already addressed that, um, unless there was something else that you guys were wanting to add to that.
Well, what do you have in there when they measure that?
It's from the property line.
Is it an average though?
Yes.
I don't like that.
Their average, if they don't run, then that average.
That average, it can be really loud for almost the whole time and then all of a sudden we don't run and it's, it's
Yeah.
That gets your average underneath there.
Oh, maybe we could rewrite it for average tender while it's operational. If we need a language.
Just.
What about peak levels? We, we have it in there there where we understand that there's gonna be um storms potentially that might um speed things up if curtailment hasn't been put into place.
Or storms like that, but.
And then it, that was, that's what we have for the peak, um, Christine. Um.
We just, I just think if you have average, it's gonna just draw down everything and it's, I don't know.
I, I mean, if they know they're getting close, they just gotta shut it down for a little bit and, you know, going to zero is gonna.
Well, and that's why we need to look and make sure our language has, probably should have um operation, times of operation.
Measure that peak level.
Well, when it's running would be times of operation.
Yeah, but it, it.
Or is peak when there's a sixty mile an hour.
Yeah, I would say, peak is when there's forty mile or thirty mile an hour wind anyway. You know, it's gonna be a lot louder than fifteen miles an hour if it's actually running.
And we've probably got our soaps.
When they shut them off because of the speed too.
I was just gonna, I was gonna say, I, I don't know what that speed is, but they do shut them off.
Yeah.
Well, one thirty mile an hour, you won't hear it anyway.
Well, yeah, you hear the wind.
What? Yeah.
Can you do it where you measure it, so they do shut it off, so that would affect the average, but can you measure it uh as the, during operation?
That's what I was trying to.
Normal operation.
During. Yes, normal operation.
Or normal, normal to peak, I mean, I just don't want it where they're, they gotta, I don't know if they can bog them down. I don't know if it's either on or it's off, I don't know that, how that works.
They can, they can slow the speed down on them, you know, so. Depending on what the energy requirement is on um you know, if there's too much and they don't have anywhere to store it.
Well, this is, I know, I joined across Illinois last Friday. And I saw two windmills moving across the whole state, saw hundreds and hundreds, and only two are actually running these, it was quite odd.
Yeah, I, I mean, we'll see, I, let's see, I'm trying to think of the last time when I was back home, so I think the last time they were not moving, the last time I was there, Jamie was there and, and on the one with his dad's property.
We moved Indianapolis across the whole state, there were like thirty, hundreds of windmills.
Well, it's the same way. It's the same way when you go out on eighty, not a long time working, and, but in Nevada, when you go across Highway thirty, they're usually going.
Yeah. So.
You're making me wonder what the, what the circumstance was.
Yeah, that's, my wife and I were just like, none of them are, one of the biggest. And we got over by Dan when we saw two, there was like forty of them around it, but only two were.
Well, it could be that there was enough uh wind power in other parts of the state that they didn't need those uh windmills right then, because you know, that, that's, that's part of the problem is, they've got enough windmills up that when they're all turning, you know, the, the system doesn't need that much power. You know, the trouble is, is the reason they have so many of them is because you never get uniform wind over a large area.
Has anyone ever read that a windmill will never produce the amount of energy that it costs to put it up?
Oh, I know that.
And what's the purpose?
Government money.
Do you guys just want, do you guys wanna clean this up or are we done?
Yeah.
The only thing, the email, yeah, the, the only thing in the email you have to back and send out in the list of things uh was we had down uh to talk about the airport flight path lovers. And I'm not sure, I can't even remember quite why we were gonna, you know, what we were talking about.
Because our thing is very vague.
That's another one that I really had trouble with because the FAA is in charge of that.
But we sat at that meeting, that guy from the FAA did not say they regulated any of that.
They have to.
They rely on your airports.
They have to file an application with the FAA when they put this stuff in.
I would say our biggest user and.
We would like to see a five man.
Is.
Around our airport.
We have the private people.
Because you have also upper Dubuque.
Like I was saying, we have private people. Uh, you, go ahead, go for it, let yourself out.
Well, I'm just, we have the large airport, Jackson County is close enough to Dubuque there where you're gonna get traffic that way. We have our own airport and we have a lot of light people coming in and out that I think we need to really look at. Yeah, it may be okay to land on a normal situation, but if they're losing power or something, we wanna try to give them the best approach to our runways as we can.
Can I just let you, um, okay, so the McCooper Airport with, oh, Don, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
I just want to finish my point now.
Yes, I apologize.
The single biggest user other than the private people out there is the inverse of view, air, uh, aviation classes. They come and do touch and goes and landings and takeoffs and all that, they're novice people. They're students. I would like to see a little bit bigger setback because they are not knowledgeable, they don't have the experience, the expertise, they handle those things.
So my, this is my concern with that, because the, the FAA regulates the airports. And.
Is sixty-four on the Grand Wood Scenic Byway?
Yes.
Never mind.
Yeah, well, that takes that out.
The takeoffs.
It's five miles.
Five miles.
It's five miles. We, we have that, our airport.
The only way it can be five miles is going south because you get the public candidate.
Right.
But the airport is literally next to sixty-four.
Yeah.
And you have a five miles that's on the Grand Wood Scenic Byway.
We've got it blocked.
So it's already blocked, it's already blocked, so. Our stops at Clinton County, I mean, we can't, so then you don't have to.
But that's not our county.
We don't have to worry about.
Right, yeah, we can't, so whatever they build, whatever Clinton County does and build on the south, we can't do anything.
That's, yeah, that's their, that's their.
So that's continuing, does it matter?
Right.
Yeah.
And we're more than five miles, it's just south.
It's only one mile from, over to down to the county alone.
Yeah, and so it stops at county line. We can't govern that anyway, no. I don't suffer here.
No, we can't. It, those scenic byways.
They got a big challenge.
Yeah, they're very, I mean, they're important, they're, I mean, they're, I mean, those, there are state and federal organizations that have put years and years' work into that, and I think respecting them is good. But also you can see that by respecting those scenic byways, we, we, we got, we're working with a pretty wide brush stroke. And it covers a lot of other um, other things. Um, and also, I was just pulling up Dubuque County Beacon, just to get an idea where um how, how far the airport is from our county lines.
There's two places where it would, well, the um, for my house, it's, I think, eight miles.
Okay.
So, and the county goes up three miles, five miles.
Still that part, well, might be closer than swinging.
Oh, yeah, the old airport road is.
I mean, where it cuts over and cuts back.
That is closer. That's why, yeah.
Oh, that's very close as to where you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I can kind of look at that and see what.
It's close to them.
But the other part of it with the northwest part of the county, we have it in there about requiring them to follow the recommendations for the DNR and for the um uh Corps of Engineers.
Federal Island.
The Corps of Engineers has in there about five miles around Active Eagle's Nest. I have an eagle's nest, an active eagle's nest on my road. That takes care of Swingle and Lamont.
Until your tree comes down.
It's not my tree.
Well, until the tree comes down.
Tree comes down.
Or the eagle's nest is no longer active.
But.
So you can't.
Right, you can't count on that.
Yeah.
No, you can't, but I mean, if they're looking at it and there's one active eagle's nest there, guess what?
Okay, what's wrong with, there's more than one. There's gonna be an airport there longer than an active eagle's nest. What's wrong with just being safe, protecting student pilots?
But we've already got it.
Five mile radius.
We've already got it with the five miles around the scenic byway. It's already there.
Okay, are you covering the flight pattern from Savannah?
It's already there. If you look at the byways, the scenic byways, if you're looking at the scenic byways, it's there. It's there in the map.
The scenic, so the road that goes from Sebula to Bellevue, there's five miles from the center line out. So you're going five miles into our county and then, you know, maybe a mile closer to the river, because the road does veer away from the, um, veer away from the river a little bit. So we're, we're covering our part of it in that great river road jumper. Um, covers Green Island, a lot of cemeteries. Sebula.
And Coqueta.
Well, the Grand Wood does, yeah, Bellevue, Andrew.
It's already there, so you don't need to add anything else, because it's already covered.
Um, the, the one thing, um, what, just to think about. Okay, so it's Dubuque Airport. If we're in their flight path, we, could we reach out? Would you wanna reach out and see if, what, get their opinion um about an additional buffer? I mean, something that reaches into our county from.
What does, what does Dubuque have? And do they have a wind ordinance? And what do they have in theirs?
They do what they're reviewing right on.
Well, they're doing it, they, they're still working on it. It's never been passed.
Would we wanna include, and I think this is kind of what you're into, Lori, talking to like other counties, like we did the Grand Wood Scenic Byway, it goes four miles into Clinton County. Would they wanna include something in their ordinance recognizing neighboring setbacks? And we do the same in case, because we don't know what they got just on the south side of our, our borders.
Right.
You know, that would be, I think, you know, if Dubuque said we want five miles around our airport, that would come into Jackson County, we would recognize neighboring county setbacks.
I like that.
I don't.
Um.
I, I, I just don't, because what happens when you have the next board coming in, I mean, they'd have to make sure that it's written into their ordinance, we need to coordinate with Dubuque County, um.
The ordinance is not gonna change with the board change.
Yeah, no, but it needs to be written in there and I just yes, right now counties are, are talking about it. What happens in ten years when they decide not to? Or forget about it, or not pay close attention.
I, I like.
Then it's in there. I mean, if they're not changing it, at least it's in there.
It would come back on your zoning administrator to um be following the ordinance.
I like the consistency of it. You know, if Dubuque's got so many miles around their airport, then we respect that, we put it in our ordinance.
Well, I don't think you would have to put anything other than we recognize neighboring county setbacks.
If they call into our county.
If they come into our county, they, if it comes in three miles, that's fine. If they change it, it's whatever they change it to. It should just be, we recognize neighboring county setbacks.
So that requires our zoning administrator to keep up on the zoning requirements for Jones, Clinton.
Dubuque.
And Dubuque. And Dubuque.
Is that something you do anyway?
Oh, gosh, no.
I have enough trouble keeping up with the greenest and.
What we have, that's my concern.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I, that's my, that's my concern, but I don't want to add any more work onto the zoning administrator.
It would have to be stagnant, it would have to be there and show what.
Right.
What it is. It would have to be a non-moving park that um would be stagnant. And just, I'm gonna throw something out here and I've talked to our county attorney. Um, I used to be a commissioner for the Mississippi River Parkway Commission. I've reached out to the current Jackson County Commissioner. And let her know that, you know, by the way, hey, guys, we're working on this ordinance. There's other counties along that byway working on ordinances or have ordinances. Um, why haven't you guys been part of this? Because it goes against your goals from the two thousand fifteen um, um. Corridor Management Plan. And so I'm making sure that I'm not overstepping my boundaries is my role. You know, where it can't be misconstrued, but um seeing about, seeing. Helping get something in place down the whole Mississippi River Parkway in the state of Iowa. Which would be beneficial all the way down. I mean, Mississippi River Parkway goes on both sides of the river.
Right.
If we start littering up our byway across the river and go see something else, that's exactly what could happen. So. To be consistent and uniform, um, I've, I've started that dialogue. As long as I'm not shut down made.
Which I think we should, I mean.
Work with the other, other like-minded or other entities that um. And, and I think for me, just with my history, I mean, that's the only reason I've reached out to them to remind them what we're working on here. And how. That, that byway is valuable and protecting the whole thing all the way down Iowa is. Is in the state's best interest.
One other thing that got brought up when I visited out in Mechanicsville and was talking to them property owners. So, as we all know, something happens on your land and you. Contaminate a pond or and have a, or a stream and have a fish kill or. It contaminates the neighbors, it's basically on that farmer. So a windmill, you put up a windmill on your farm and you have Mechanicsville happening. It ultimately is on that farmer. Unless you write it in your ordinance that it goes to the owner of the project.
So. Here's my problem with that. I, I mean, I've got two. A lot of your farm buildings today that are built. They're insulated. What are they insulated with? Fiberglass. If we put something more stringent on this than we do the farmer. The other part of it is, I know how much these people get for windmills on their property. I mean, my father-in-law gets over thirty grand a year. All right? So they're being compensated for putting that on. The Mechanicsville issue happened. A lot because of what happened with the contract. And so I'm really hesitant to do that. They should be. Working with their insurance company that's on their property, granted. I really feel for them, it's a, it's a real crappy situation of what.
And I'm not, I'm not saying it just because of them, but that's the one thing that got brought up from the lawyers on their side.
But it's a liability, but the problem is. The windmill company paid the attorney to look at, look at the contract. So guess what, they can't go back to the. They can't go back to the attorney and say, what can I do? The attorney says, you didn't pay me, so I can't help you on it.
Right.
That was, that was what happened with that.
But shouldn't that language be in the landowner's contract?
It should not be, it should not be something that the county dictates because. Are we gonna dictate to every farmer that puts up a new building that's got. Insulation in it and it blows away during a tornado.
Responsible for it. That windmill is the windmill company's windmill, it ain't that farmer's.
Owner is being compensated highly for that. They are being compensated quite a bit by that.
To me, the compensation doesn't come into play when you look at the types of fiberglass.
And.
They're completely different.
Don, I agree with that, but uh that is not something we should get into. Because then we're dictating the liability and, and it's the property owner. We need to stay out of, of, if it goes on to somebody else's property. They need to come back to the property owner or the windmill company. We shouldn't be dictating that because what happens with. Old buildings that have asbestos in them. You know, we, I'm sure on our farm, I know one time.
Again, it's the person that owns the building.
But you know what? They signed the lease, they've got a lease agreement with that property owner. It should be in the contract. We should not be dictating on how the windmill, on how the wind turbine company is gonna. Put in their contract and what the property owner is gonna agree to. The property owner is saying, I'll take your cash for putting that on. All right, great, you're getting a huge chunk of money every year for having this, having this on.
See, I don't see it that way because, again, let's look at it in farming. I'm gonna rent. Sorry, Tom, I'm gonna use you again. I'm gonna rent Tom's farm. So I'm renting his farm. His shed blows apart because of a catastrophic event. Now it's on me because I rented his farm? No, it's back on him because he owns it.
You've got liability insurance, your liability insurance should be paying you. Yes, that is on him.
But on those windmills, it's not because they're.
Then you know how, if you've got a lease, if you have a lease, a lease agreement. Yes, you are the renter and you, you have to keep liability insurance as well on that property.
But not on the.
But not on the structure, so that structure is screwed all over the farm.
Are you using that structure?
Well, it may be, it may not be.
That farmer's not using that windmill either, but it's set up his length.
You're right, but he signed the lease agreement to it, so guess what? Why am I gonna dictate the liability on that? So if a, um, what else do we have out there? A, a cell tower. All right? Who pays for the cell tower? Do we have that in any of our ordinances that says cell company?
Maybe we don't, but maybe we should. Just because we don't have it doesn't mean it isn't something we.
Then we put it in everything and not just one.
Well, and that's fine, when we're looking at all these other ones, then we need to maybe look at putting them in there. But do we not put it in there because we haven't started the process yet?
I think this is something we need to ask the county attorney.
I've already asked the no go.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's.
Yeah, because I don't want to get, I do not want to get involved with. With dictating all the cleanup and stuff like that, we've already got.
Well, I don't want to dictate it, but to me, we.
But that's what we're gonna do if we put anything like that in here. I mean, we've already got the cleanup on the catastrophic.
Did we ban prototype windmills?
No, because how do we know it's a prototype?
Uh, there's, there's a big difference between prototype and mass-produced.
How do we know that? And, and who's gonna keep track of it?
And you require in your uh. Deconditioning catastrophic failure has to be cleaned up in a hundred and twenty days, but as they don't.
We've got it, we've. We have a fine ordinance, but that's something that's next on the agenda after we get through all this stuff. To work on the fines that are out there because you don't want to put a fine in one ordinance. We've already got it. I mean, we can't do it.
It can't be increased over a certain amount.
Right.
And I think we're at our max. I'm, I'm gonna, gonna, I'm gonna, word this correctly, so I get it to John, right, so. Can, can we make the contract read the damages from the turbine caused tending neighbor's property? Is um. The turbine company is responsible for the damage.
They're liable.
Isn't it just common sense? Is a person that's leasing this, you would have that in there? I'm sorry. Um, it just seems like. I mean, okay, I mean, I'm gonna ask him, but to me, it just seems like it's like. Common sense. And that's having a rental car, I'm responsible because I'm driving it.
Yeah, that, I, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
The turbine company should be responsible, they're the ones driving it.
Yeah, can we assign liability?
The turbine company is not responsible because they're driving it. That's the issue.
The issue is, can we assign the liability? That's a good point, Lori, and I don't think we can, we as a board can assign liability. And that's the problem.
And back to what Don said, can you ask him? Can we put it in there? Would it hold any water if we put in, you know, the. You know, only established models, you know, they couldn't use a prototype?
Because Mechanicsville.
Yeah, that's why, I know where you're going with that.
And we talked about that because after we found out they were prototypes, it's like, whoa, that's part of the problem here.
Yeah, that's, that was a huge part of that problem, right, exactly, so.
When you say there's a difference, Don, what's the difference?
It's concrete.
The tower itself is concrete. There's only five in the United States.
Okay.
You know, and just like a smokestack.
Right now, nobody can answer how to take it down.
Right, they won't go.
They got one guy that's willing to blow it up. But he doesn't know.
What could possibly go wrong with that?
He can't answer any questions when you ask him, when they asked him on blowing it up.
They said the prebar in it was poured under tension, so if it's not demolished correctly, parts could fly much as a half a mile.
Yeah.
Because it's in the concrete, it's all under tension.
Okay, one other thing that was brought up in an email from Lori. What, what was it regarding about what if these owners lease it to somebody else? And do we have it in our wording as owner, leaseortenant, lessor, whatever?
Okay, so you're talking about if the, with the, the wind turbine changes hands.
Right.
That is a concern about how we get those um. Um, those surety bonds to follow the ownership of the turbines.
So is that something we need to address?
Um, we can, because I'm talking to John about that for some other things right now that would be buildings on leased land, so. Um, bonding.
I have one other thing also, so right now. Like they get their tax credits or whatever up to eight, is it eight years, I think, before they start. Having to pay taxes on it and then it's up, prorated so much. Each year up to so far.
I don't know how the tax, I don't know how the tax.
That's when they rebuild them.
Right, when they start having to pay. So when I attended. The other county's meetings, one thing they talked about in theirs is putting in there that. If they're rebuilding, they're not taken back to ground zero, they're back to like at the tax. Point.
Wouldn't that be something that the assessor would determine?
No, it's a state thing and contractual thing.
So then how can we put it in if it's a state thing?
Part of it is. The, the increment, I think, is, but.
I think, I think we can put it in there, do some more research on it.
Cause the one.
We can put it in there about, they were saying if it was in our ordinance, we can put it in there so that they don't go back to ground zero because. That's what they do, they get to that eight to ten years and hope we're gonna put all new blades on now, so now it's back at ground zero. So you never get tax money off the damn things.
Um. I've seen some where they do get good tax dollars, but here's my thought, so that the, the taxes are based off acquisition cost. So you got your first acquisition, you added more cost, you've added to your acquisition, acquisition cost. So my.
Never get to them years where you're actually starting to pay in, then you're not getting.
But they, they do. Um, I've, I've followed some of the, I went to different counties and followed. You know, followed the years and went back on the um taxes and opened, and I can't tell you which counties they are, which turbines they are, because some of them have. Several hundred, um, but. Because usually the repowering starts at twenty years, fifteen to twenty. So, um, but at the same time, my, my point is, it should never go back to zero. Because it's based on acquisition cost. So if you have your initial acquisition of four point five million dollars. And you repower and you just put another three million dollars into it, your acquisition is what for four, four point five up to over eight million dollars. So it should add to the top and not ever come back down. And that's the language I would like to see you guys consider. Not just that it comes back, it doesn't go to zero, that it actually goes up because you're adding to your acquisition cost.
So, okay, this one. Why are we putting tax, anything into the ordinance?
Um, it was just value. Cause it's not taxes, it's actually value that we're looking at, because it takes, she's talking, it takes the value back down to zero. Um, where, where the, the tax base is, but yeah, it's taking the value back down to zero. So basically, the counties, the counties that have these that have had the repowerings. Have lost that, um, they're saying they've lost that revenue.
Can you? I know you've got a lot on, can you write how down how this is taxed, so I can understand that? Because it doesn't, I, I don't understand where the taxing. Why the zoning board should be concerned with the taxation of it.
I don't think.
It's in the agreement when they, when they make the application, it starts like a twenty percent per year. Those are the twenty-five percent of what the cost, value, if the value would be, and, and, and. They, they change it, they go up every year. They're rolled back, they're rolled back a lot more than another.
Right above the name, go.
Sorry.
So I don't.
But.
I, I don't quite understand that because I don't, I.
Actually, it starts at five percent and.
It was an agreement what they had with the county, that's the agreement they had. Cause they wanted them at one time, they wanted the tax revenue off them, and this was the deal, no, no different than a TIF. You want a corporation to come in that's valued at X amount of dollars and create X amount of jobs, you tip them.
I know that, but why, why would we put that in a zoning ordinance?
That's what it used to be, I said, I, I don't know, it's part of the, it's whole, it's, it's part of the whole complicated.
We can see if it's in the zoning ordinance or if it's a special agreement that's assigned by the board of supervisors. I think it's two separate documents.
That's what, I, yeah.
Through the city, it would come through the council, never mind through zoning.
I think it's different. I think it's different and, you know, but one thing I would just encourage the board of supervisors, if that does come across your desk, not that we're ever gonna get any turbines, but. Don't let that go back to zero, um, it would be, you're, you're adding to the value.
Something else, and maybe it's a concern. Um, do we know where, uh, any battery storage? For the power would be that would be generated by these turbines? I talked to you a little bit about it, Lori. Um, there are some issues happening in Scotland. And these batteries are stored near the properties. And they're the size of multiple semi trucks. And they've been struck by lightning and caught on fire. And they're just like Teslas, they're impossible to put out. And with the majority, I believe, of Jackson County's fire departments volunteer. And the lack of ability to have water or that much water that would be required. Um, do we know where these, because they have to store it somewhere on an interim basis, do we know what that is? Or what they're doing in other counties with that?
Um, well, first of all, we don't know how many, well, we assume zero turbines would be coming into our county. Um, but if, say, subject, let's just say we ended up with ten turbines. Um, one, they haven't been sighted yet. So we don't know where they would be, let alone the battery storage, and two, we haven't developed that ordinance yet.
Yeah, I was gonna say, isn't this gonna be covered more when we do the battery?
Yeah.
Because I think the battery maybe, not so much for the windmill, but the battery ordinance, you know, might come into play. With other applications.
It could.
Yeah. Yeah.
It could.
So there'll be a separate battery ordinance, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and that was because of our lack of. We knew truthfully, it was our lack of knowledge, we, we knew we needed to get in front of a, a wind turbine ordinance, that's what we did.
There's currently a moratorium on battery storage.
Until June of twenty-five.
Yeah.
So.
I didn't know that, that came up before I was involved, so I just wanna make sure I'm not.
Yeah, um. That and the utility scale solar.
I text you earlier while we're here, asking about that, you know, crossover setbacks between county lines, they thought it was a good idea.
I'm not saying it's not a good idea. My concern is how much additional work it puts on the zoning administrator. Be able to keep track of other county zoning or ordinances that we're agreeing to that they can cross over. The other part of it is. Who? Which county? Uh, covers the, you know, let's say, um, a wind turbine does go up. Within, you know, the five miles, if we put something in for, for airports up in northern Jackson County. And we put in, we put in this moratorium. What county is gonna be responsible? Obviously, you would think that it would be like Dubuque County would put it in there. But they have a new administrator, they go through the whole process. What's to say that, that, because it's not quote, something that. They're agreeing to allow Jackson County's ordinance to cover part of Dubuque County. Are they really going to be able to cover that and know what, know what's going on? I, I think it, I think it, Lori, I think.
GIS layer, yep, it can happen. Cuz you would, what you would do, okay, I showed you the GIS layer for the, the Great River Road and the Grant River Scenic Byway. Um. Let's say, well, we have the Great River Road and let's say they, they adopt that in Dubuque County and in Clinton. So we'd have properties in lower Jackson County that would fall within five miles of their Great River Road. So we would have to map that out, just like with the airport, you just add it to your GIS layer. So it would not, it would not be any additional burden, all I'd have to do is look at my GIS layer and say, no, that's within the. The buffer that covers this.
Okay, cuz that, that's what concerns me.
So you just want it to be a static, like, at a certain date, this is what it was, you don't wanna keep up with it over time, is what.
I'd say make it a static layer and.
Yeah, right.
And just, yeah, just, and if you do it in GIS and you have, this is the areas you can. We, we can build them in, and then, you know, at the same time, you know, you get your easement agreement, it doesn't mean setbacks.
Does that GIS layer though overlap for Jackson County? What Dubuque would do?
We would have, we would build our own layer to match what we needed to, that we've agreed to adopt.
Their layer coming into ours, it's us, it's ours then, it just, it just conforms with theirs.
All that technology is coming in, it'll be on Beacon before you can decide what you wanna do, no different than your school zones, they're all on there, it's, it's. It'd be recognizing Clinton's airport, Clinton to be, or Dubuque's airport, Clinton to be recognizing our airport. You know, the, the fly space, you know, maybe Clinton's airport, you know, just those.
I know, it just, I.
At some point, the federal government will probably do so, but that's just the way we get.
I have to, I have to think about it. I'm a fact. I'm a fact-based person.
Yeah.
I don't wanna go by, oh, I feel this way, I wanna know the facts and how it's going to affect things. I don't wanna go on all the emotion, oh, we need to have. And that, and that's exactly what I'm getting at, and that's, and that's what my concern is, I wanna play devil's advocate because. We are solely responsible for Jackson County, we're not responsible for Clinton, Jones, Dubuque. And I just wanna make sure that all the bases are covered, so that if we do look at doing something like this. That they can all work together and everybody knows about it.
Right.
Because I don't want, oh, I didn't know what the right hand was doing compared to the left hand, I, I don't wanna do that, we gotta know what's going on.
That would be where we'd have to adopt a new part of the ordinance that recognizes the border county. That would be something that would have to do, it wouldn't be just like a phone call, hey, by the way, we extended this into your county.
That's what I, that's what I mean, and, and so.
They can't make rules for us.
Right.
Just like we can't make rules for Clinton County or Jones, and kinda like the resolutions that are coming from these towns, you know. They can, it's kind of a suggestion until we adopt it by ordinance.
I know, and, and that's why, I mean, I just wanna make sure. That everything is clear, cuz I just don't wanna add the extra work because our focus is not any of those other counties, it's our Jackson County.
Right.
I think we, I think we made some good progress.
I don't see anything else that's on.
If the Board of Supervisors can't find me next week, you'll find me down here in the basement. Away from my phones and away from any distractions. The jail's empty too, just lock me up, and you know I can't chase any squirrels. Oh, hey. So.
Yeah, I don't know, does anybody else have anything they wanna throw out there, or is there anything else that I'm missing that? That's on our list. I'm sorry. All right, I think if there's nothing else, I think we can adjourn.
John, I think you can make that one. No, can't make motions, okay, just leave.